I'm sorry that we are taking a view. I want to make this one. Oh, no. That was not what I wanted to do.
Setting tab is open on the bottom if you want to open it there.
Are you left-handed?
No.
Why aren't you open for me?
It's open.
But here, but see, I don't have the.
Yeah, no.
Controls. And I don't see the zoom open here.
Uh, it would be under the here.
Should I let you drive? There. It's so interesting that it's not letting me slide anything.
It's here.
Oh. All right, I'm gonna take a second. How do we get this up there and controls back over here? No. No, this is all internal only.
Is there anybody online?
Yeah, we got two people.
Okay.
And I can't let them in until I can get my thing to control. All right, let's do, uh, I think F-11 is one of the things that you use for multiple. Yeah, it's Dan Courier is waiting. Yes, all right, good.
Okay.
So that there is there. There we go. Ah, that's not what I wanted. Speaker view, how about the people who are trying to enter? Speaker view, gallery review, sort by, hide cell view, full screen. I'm sorry.
It's all right, I can get us started while you're.
There we go, yep, Dan and Alec. So Alex gives us another person for quorum. Again, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yep, so we're all set for quorum.
All right, good morning, everybody. Good morning, Patrick. It is a beautiful day and I'm really happy that we are in this beautiful space. Um, and so I'm glad that you're all here to join me and all of us together, um, for the whole morning. So we are gonna get started, um, and for the board meeting part of it, we will, um, kind of be in this configuration, um, but then as we get more into the planning that we will rearrange as needed, we'll use spaces, um, throughout the building or maybe just outside this building, this room. Um, so, uh, I just want to start with, uh, the agenda and, um, sorry for the technical difficulties. Um, so we'll figure this out, but, um, are there any adjustments to the agenda? All right, um, any public comments? Okay, um, before we go too far into it, can we just do introductions? Is that okay if we do that now?
Introductions and also the safety briefing for the build, uh, for the location.
Okay.
So let's do introductions and then we'll, I'll point out where the bathrooms are.
Okay, that's not, okay.
Yep.
Um, well, you all know me, I'm Amy Brewer, I'm Wilston Commissioner and, um, current Chair of the Board of Commissioners.
I'm Andrea Swazo, Burlington Commissioner and Board Chair.
Austin Davis, WISI Commissioner, uh, serving as immediate pasture.
Julie Rosenstrich, uh, alternate for Shelburne.
Morning, everybody, Paul Connor, alternate for Southern.
Hi, I'm Patrick D'Amico, I'm a frequent examiner.
I'm Phil, representing, uh, um, your morning, Patrick, here, alternate for Grand.
Sharon, we are an organizational development consultant, having fun with you, but I didn't tell them.
Amy Smith, I'm the Director of Rider Experience.
Rich Paul, GMT, Slade Company.
Nick Cost, Director of Finance.
John Morris, it's the General Manager.
Jamie Johnson, currently the Director of Education and Acting Operations.
Austin McHenry, Director of Community Resources.
Tim Ratchett, Director of Quirants.
I'm Paul Boni, Representative for Massics.
Susan Grasso, Representative for Shelburne.
Charlie Tomlin, alternate at Wilson.
Monica, I'm Director of Commission for Cities of London.
Matt Timon, the Director of Transit and Infrastructure.
Clayton Clark, the General Manager.
And online, uh, Dan, you wanna unmute and introduce yourself?
Always, thanks, Amy. Hey, everyone, it's Dan Courier from V-Trans. I'm here just for the morning, so if you have any questions for me, I'll be here, thanks.
Thanks, Dan, and Alec.
Yeah, thanks, Alec Jones, Lamo County Planning Commission. I hope to be with you guys in person today, but I ended up with COVID this weekend, so I figured I'd spare you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, and, um, Dan and Alec, Alec, I'm sorry, but we had some, uh, technical difficulties and there is not a camera on the screen in the room, so you are stuck looking at Clayton and myself. Suckers, okay, um, bathrooms and other needs to know.
Okay, so, um, the exit is right there, in case of emergency, we can just go right out to the right. Um, if you do need to use the restroom, there is a single restroom that is serving all of us today. And so, um, for breaks, it, I'm sure it will get somewhat busy, uh, so I would encourage folks to go as they need to.
Is it actually a full stall restroom or is it a retail?
And is that open to the public because, okay, great, Sharon, for knowing that, uh, because the ones in the basement or downstairs were locked, and, um, and so overflow one down, and, um, yeah, I'm excited for the day.
Great, um, and so there was no public comment, uh, the consent agenda. Does everybody have a chance to look at the meeting minutes and the check register, any questions? Or motions to approve?
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a second. Oh, enthusiastic seconds from over there, thanks, you too. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, um, moving along, um, we have an election of officers. Um, every July, theoretically, we, um, elect, uh, a slate of officers to include Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and Treasurer. I think that's it, um, this past year, it has been myself, Andrea, Paul, and Phil from Heinsberg, who's been our Secretary for a long time. Um, we no longer have Phil as we've lost Heinsberg, um, and Susan graciously offered to step in as Secretary. So I think the slate currently that we're putting up is myself for no more than one more year, Andrea, um, Paul, and Susan. I don't know if anybody wants to nominate anybody else or accept that slate or have any discussion.
And there is a sample, uh, motion in the, uh, the read ahead, um, and I could read that, uh, for you all. I move to elect Amy Brewer as Chair, Andrea Swazo as, uh, Vice Chair, Paul Boni as Treasurer, Susan Grasso as Secretary, and Bob Berman as Leadership Committee Member-at-Large for fiscal year 2026.
Amy, I'd like to endorse the swing of officers as Red by the Manager.
All right, sorry, Bob, my apologies, I didn't remember. All right, so we have a move and second. Oh, Judy, yep, I'm sorry, because Susan's here, so. Let's try that again, thank you. Okay, thank you, tag team Judy, Catherine, and that's all right, oh, is your second still stand? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed or abstaining? All right, we will continue with this group and welcome Susan, thank you to everybody.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yay, one more year. And I'll just remind you guys, you can with, you can withdraw me as Chair anytime you want.
No.
All right, uh, moving along, um, the next item is the delegation of authority to approve annual diesel fuel procurement. Matt, you want to talk us through this?
So there's a memo on page 13, important packet, um, see if this, uh, everybody has the important packet.
High points, yes, please.
Uh, so we have a 12-month fixed fuel contract for diesel fuel supporting our own complete. Uh, that expires at the beginning of July, but we have issued a new invitation for bids for a, uh, subsequent 12-month, uh, fixed fuel contract. We have projected our fuel needs 300,000 gallons over the next 12-month term. This IFB is largely mirrored the IFBs that we have issued for, uh, long, long-term fuel contracts over the past three years. Uh, we've been successful with this group, so we're looking to do this once more. Main difference for this one is that we are including an add-all price for renewable diesel. This seems to be a market market, uh, at the moment, and renewable diesel is similar to biodiesel, but it's, it's different. Uh, it is a drop-in fuel, means that it can be used by existing diesel tanks without any qualification. Uh, it is made from, uh, renewable fuel, renewable sources, uh, such as plant matter and animal fats. So we were gonna, we're requesting pricing for 100% renewable diesel as well as the traditional ultra-low sulfur diesel. Uh, to get a sense of the pricing, maybe we can, uh, help boost our climate goals in the, in the state. At minimal cost, the GMT, uh, hit the price news, uh, similarly, probably defined with petroleum fuel. Uh, so, uh, at the moment, we have 10 companies that have requested a copy of the MBIT for bids. We have a slate of questions from one vendor that we will be answering today. Uh, bids are due next month and will be publicly opened. Uh, the way that, uh, long-term fuel contracts work is that they give us a bid based on the market price for diesel fuel, diesel fuel futures, and vendors have limited time where they can lock in that pricing. So the, uh, procurement schedule is to issue an award following Business Day, so that would be Tuesday, the 23th, 29th, no later than 1pm. So to accommodate that schedule, we are requesting the Board of Commissioners delegate authority to Board Chair and Treasurer to, uh, consider the recommendations from staff and issue the award or issue their approval, uh, on behalf of the full board. And so the motion that we are, uh, there's a motion, uh, proposed motion in the memo, I'll read that for the, uh, good of the group. Uh, give the staff requests of the Board of Commissioners delegate authority to Board Chair and Treasurer to approve recommendations from staff on behalf of the full board for the award of 12-month fixed-price fuel contracts. Are there any questions?
I have a technical, oh, that's a real question.
How will the decision about the add-alternates be made? We would, we would consider the pricing and whether it can be accommodated in budget. I believe the way, the way that we would, uh, approach the, the evaluation is that we would take the basic prices, verify the lowest, and look at their add-on, we can make a decision on whether to award the basic price or the add-all price from the low bit.
Did I just say there's going to be some maintenance changes? Did I say it was better?
I think that's correct, uh, I have not discussed that with them personally. Do you have a question?
I do, does that answer your question?
It's my first meeting, oh.
Okay. I've never heard of, of the alternate diesels, so it's kind of interesting, um, to read about. So I was kind of curious how it all is gonna play out also. That's not my real question, my real question is, I'm, I'm, I'm on vacation on that day in Utah in a park, State Park. I don't know if I'm gonna have access to internet, so I don't know that you want me.
Andrea?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I can sell them.
Uh, renewable diesel is used pretty heavily in California, as, uh, I think there are certain reasons in California where they don't use petroleum diesel. So there's actually a real rich specification, uh, that renewable diesel, diesel needs in that area.
Susan?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, so I'm not hearing, I was entirely, so sorry, I didn't really have any kind of answer to my first question. So how will we make a decision about whether or not to, that would be the alternative?
Um, we'll do a price analysis on the bids that we're seeing, uh, basically, basic price, and then we'll look at the add-all for the low bit and check the price, the projected price difference between the two. And we can make a business decision on whether to award the, the alternate fuel or the bid.
So our goal is to try to go to the alternate, alternate fuel if we can afford it, and that decision may be made based on the after-hunter of time?
Correct.
Do you, do you have a number, a price difference in mind that is, that is like what you're thinking about as to when you made that call? Like if it's $2 more a gallon versus 20 cents more a gallon? We don't really have an internal, we, just part of the, part of the approach here is to get a sense of the price difference
between petroleum and renewable diesel, and I think can inform future decision-making on whether, because renewable diesel can come in different forms, you could be a 40% renewable diesel to gain some savings. So if there is a similar price or, um, if there's maybe a trend downward in price, the next 12-month deal contract, we could specify a diesel blend of, say, 40% renewable diesel that would help, um, with some climate benefits as well as potentially some maintenance benefits, while also keeping the price in line for used to for, for diesel fuel when within a budget. I'm not sure if that answers your question either.
So it sounds like the day that they're all due, and one of the things that surprised me with this process is that because it fluctuates, you know, hourly, um, you really don't know what you're gonna get until the bids are, are in. You're gonna go through a business analyst process where you're gonna analyze the bids and give them a rank scoring, you know, based on our, our procurement practices, and then that will then lead to a recommendation, uh, to Andrea and Paul.
Correct.
Yep.
We do, so the unique piece of this type procurement is that we do our independent cost estimate as close to the bid date as possible because of that fluctuation in price. So I'm sitting here not having the independent cost estimate because of that process. Uh, we look at the fuel, the futures market ourselves, uh, as well as the margins that we typically see for fuel contracts and develop an estimate of what the, what we think the bids will come in at. So, like, so if we do that as late in the process as possible as we go through market fluctuations.
Awesome.
So assuming we get an understanding for what the difference between the renewable diesel is and standard low-sulfur diesel, and we're comfortable that price difference due to climate goals, are we assured from our partners in the state that they're comfortable with us paying that premium and we can be willing to contribute as part of the state's, uh?
So, Dan, I don't want to put you on the spot here, and this may be something that you have to consult with, but do you, does V-Trans have a perspective as far as whether they want us to go with lowest cost or should we, uh, should we consider?
Great question, it all depends on the way that the procurement was worded. So if you're evaluating only on low costs as the award methodology, then the answer is yes. But you can do, um, a cost based on performance and based on past practices, I mean, there's a lot of things. I was not part of the IFB review on this one because it's solely urban procurement. And so, um, if Matt would tell me what that procurement methodology was, I could tell you.
So it's an invitation for bid, so it is low bid. Uh, there are contractor qualifications to be considered for award, so it's a lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Yeah.
There you go.
Uh, I will say that, uh, we really were only gonna consider renewable diesel if it's, doesn't have a significant budgetary impact. So we would be working in consultation with Nick on what our budget figure is for, uh, fuel in total the other nine years. And renewable diesel aligns with that figure, we would consider that, but I, I don't believe that if there was a large premium, we'd like to put a consideration renewable diesel.
I'm just thinking about past times when we've looked at trying to go our way towards the state's climate goals. They'd come and increase marginal costs, and then we've gotten criticized for that marginal cost later. So I just wanted to make sure everyone's at the table, understanding that there will be marginal increase in costs to, you know, co-benefits we're looking for, and that everyone's aware of that, no one's criticizing them.
And it sounds like that, uh, this is set up so that we're, it's gonna be more of a fact-finding mission to, for future years because, uh, with the low-cost requirement, I'm, I would be shocked if this would be the low-cost one.
So I didn't find the example, was there also a made it?
So I did check in with our made it staff, there is some, I think they will even spend on the engine. So possibly be some maintenance savings down line, but are you on line?
Which, which fuel?
The body.
But that's not part of my.
No, we, we don't, I mean, there, there is an assumption it's better on the end, and so, you know, hopefully we have what we're using as fast by using the fuel, but you have no, and, 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 uh, certainly.
Not to, not to, you know, play the similar, very bad, but there was always going to be an operations maintenance saving on the buses, and then we find out the electrical and the fire special overall.
Yeah, I went base on saving.
Yeah.
I'm always cautious.
So it sounds like what we are gonna be presenting to Andrea and Paul is gonna be the lowest-cost option that meets our qualifications. Okay. And if that happens to be the biodiesel, then that'd be the biodiesel, if it's not, then it'd be the regular diesel.
And just to clarify, I think we should, you know, have this back, I think we should engage with V-Trans and other partners to make sure that they're comfortable with us.
Yep. Yes.
Okay, no further discussions, I'll ask if someone wants to make a motion. And if anybody wants to cheat on a motion.
So I can read a possible motion, which is, okay.
Help to cheat.
Thanks.
That the Board, uh, Commissioners delegate authority to the Board Chair and Treasurer approve recommendations from staff on behalf of the full board for the award of 12-month fixed-price fuel contract.
And I'll say my question.
Oh, it's not which.
Yeah.
I meant it to, I meant my previous motion to Vice Chair instead of Chair.
Thank you, and I have a second, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Great, any abstaining? Great, motion carries, thank you all, let's look at this conversation. And it's interesting, I mean, it's nice, it's interesting to think that we could be moving in a, a new direction that helps meet our goals, climate goals.
And I'm excited because availability of that fuel is just recent, right, correct? Because I seem to recall last year it wasn't available in there yet.
Well, Connor just jumped on, uh, you probably get a better person to answer that, but I.
Yeah.
I know it's been, I know it's been used in California for quite some time.
Yep.
All right, moving right along, um, we are, um, once again talking about ending fare-free on the 11. Uh, last time we encouraged, uh, or we made it so that GMT could go out, staff could go out and, and talk to the public. That's happened, um, and so we're gonna move forward on that, and I'll toss it over to you.
And so I'm gonna do my best Chris Damiani impersonation, which will, uh, not be nearly as good as, as him. Um, I'm very happy that he is, uh, gonna be, uh, taking some time away. And, um, and so, uh, we have been considering, uh, closely with the city of Burlington, um, ending the 30-year tradition of having a College Street Shuttle that would be fare-free. Um, as folks may know, that we are, um, gonna be consolidating the, um, routing of the number 11 and the number 1, um, in August, so that they will, um, follow the same pathway. Um, this will provide a 15-minute corridor of service between downtown and Dorset Street, South Burlington, which is, um, one of our biggest, um, uh, transportation points between those two, uh, stops. And, um, we feel that it would be very confusing to riders if every other ride or every other bus that went by was fare-free. Um, and, and talking it over with the Transportation, Energy and Utility Committee of the Burlington City Council, um, they are prepared, uh, to move away from this tradition. Um, I do want to note that, uh, we heard from, uh, Paul, alternate in South Burlington, not Paul or Treasurer, um, asking about what's gonna happen with the 90,000 and, um, uh, that Burlington is paying for that. Uh, we will not get that 90,000, it will be a, a budgetary impact for local match, um, but it will be addressed in our budget adjustment. And, uh, um, and so this would be effective on August 25th. We had a public, um, uh, meeting, uh, to get input from the public on it, and one person attended. You know, it's hard to, to, to say with the public meetings that we've had over the past year, some have been very well-attended, some have not. So, um, um, my hope is, is that the general riding public does not see this as, um, a, a major issue and that that's reflected with the lack of attendance, um, there at the public meeting. And, uh, I know that our, uh, talking with our workforce, that they are in favor of this, uh, change as well. Um, so considering, um, all of the different, uh, aspects of it, uh, we'll be asking the, uh, the Board here to authorize the end of fare-free service, um, and there is a sample motion, uh, which I'll read. I move that Green Mountain Transit Board of Commissioners approve to remove the fare-free portion of the number 11 airport route effective August 25th, 2025.
Ooh, Austin, Susan, do you want a second? He was faster than you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just know that, uh, I installed it since, uh, I called it, it was my, uh, that was my FOIA 82, GMT ridership. It was my first, I took it many times, but I understand and, uh, I thank staff for bringing out a way to consolidate those routes and serving all interests.
Yeah. Just want to know, I ride the number one, and I watch confusion probably every other day when I'm having a student gets on, goes right past the fair, and the bus driver has to come back, and the bus driver, do you really frustrating with it?
Yes.
Okay, all of these things are true, though it's hard, but I appreciate the fact that we've had to make that adjustment. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Or abstentions? All right. Thank you. And I just want to check, Alec, can you, I'm guessing you can hear me. Can you hear when other people around the room are speaking?
Yeah, I think the people at the further end is a little hard to hear, but I'm, I'm catching everything.
Okay. Great. If you don't, just holler and we'll, we'll repeat.
Thank you.
All right. The last item before our break is an ending to the ADA let them ride.
Yes. And so folks may recall that earlier this year, we ended our let them ride policy with our fixed route service. And one of the things that we didn't realize until we did our quarterly check-in with SSTAA is that our contract with them has also been set up with sort of a let them ride practice. And they expressed concern to us because this is becoming a challenge for them with collections. And so they indicated that they have quite a few riders who have ongoing balances, that they are trying to have their call center staff then, you know, encourage them to pay. And in an extreme case, they have a particular rider who has over $700 worth of back fares for the SSTAA service, paratransit service. They asked us if the, if we could move away from that service. I did check to make sure that this would not trigger a requirement for public meetings, but it's only if we change the fares. So that was sort of the same way that we were able to end the let them ride policy on fixed route without public meetings, so we would be able to do the same thing here. I think that one of the things that I want to avoid doing is having to increase our SSTAA contract to pay them, to harass people for, you know, paying back balances. I think that it's going to be, you know, much cleaner, just that if, if, if you have the fare to pay, just like on our buses, you have to pay when, when SSTAA arrives. I will say that we are working with them to provide technical assistance so that there will be something other than a cash option. And Jamie has done a great job of working with them to let them know about some of the other very low-cost, you know, they don't need a $20,000 fare box, you know, like our buses do. So they have some much more lower-cost options that are going to allow them to accept some electronic payments that will then give flexibility in payment to the, to the person who is riding. So they don't necessarily will have to have cash. And, and so I think that, you know, one of the things that we know has been challenging for us budgetarily is sort of the explosive growth with the ADA program over the past five years. And I think that this is a step that we can take to help, number one, keep that growth lower when it comes to what we're paying SSTAA to do. Again, not having them paid to be a collections agency. And then also help make sure that by people paying their fares and not being allowed to continue to ride without fares, that, that the usage go back into, into alignment in a way that we can better afford. And so I do realize that this is, we provided, or we had extensive discussion about the end of the let them ride for our fixed route. If, if the board feels that this is something that needs to be pondered longer, I'm happy to defer this decision, although I do know that SSTAA is hoping to have, you know, relief, you know, sooner than later. And so that is the, the situation. There is a, a sample motion, which is that I move that GMT and SSTAA end the practice of providing transportation to paratransit users who are unable to pay for the service. As with our fixed route service, payment will be required at the time of service. This change in practice will be implemented 30 days after issuing notice to existing riders. So it won't be 30 days from today. It'd be 30 days from whenever we work with SSTAA to send out a notice letting folks know that, you know, as of this particular day, they'll have to pay to use the service.
I have a question. Does this, does this policy in that contract with SSTAA date back to when we reinstated fares? Or does that go further?
It goes further back. And so it was, it was actually the practice that was in place pre-pandemic.
Okay.
I have other questions. One is do we, do we assess the extent of the problem? I understand that one person that's backed bill, that's a hundred dollars, but do we know like a percentage of riders, it's actually impacts? And then my second question is, how is, how would this be invented for those who have accounts? Would they still be able to continue to ride if they pay for it in the future?
I don't particularly like the idea of spending cash, getting, you know, cash from the, the riders with the past two balances. And so I would probably propose that we start off, you know, fresh, but I'm going to need to confer with Adam on that because, you know, ultimately they would, we would be eating the cost with them. Nick, can you estimate the number?
So this is a little bit different than the let them ride situation, where these folks are planning, we're just letting folks write on credit. And that's the problem is that folks just get on, like my staff has to send out all these letters, hundreds and hundreds of letters every month to say, hey, you owe this balance. And then folks get confused and they call on SSTAA, and now SSTAA just let us, you know, keep a lot more people to manage this. So it just would be a lot easier if folks just paid before they got the service, which is not uncommon. In fact, this came up because SSTAA had been at a meeting of other paratransit providers, and those folks had that model because otherwise it would come to clause on the coal missions and, you know, agents. So, and your second question, I would assume you would just start fresh. I mean, it's, it's, I think the unpaid balances in the thousands, but it's under 10,000. And so the problem is SSTAA is actually, if this continues to grow, they're either going to want more staff, which is going to cost them more money, or they're going to want to write off the, the all fares and not collect anything for anything. So I think this, this would be a big improvement, especially if we had better technology for us, so folks can pay, you know, the credit card.
So it sounds like it's, it's more than just letting them ride, it's not just changing how.
Yeah, it's just please pay before you get the service, so we don't have to, you know, chase you for, for payment. And, and I think that's, that's slightly different than folks who get on fixed route buses and are finding the pay and or.
Do, do, and does anybody pay as they ride now?
At SSTAA, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, lots of people do.
I don't have the exact split, but.
That's okay.
It's just the manpower to manage the credit that folks build up is the real problem.
Yeah. Go ahead.
You were talking about going to offer additional ones of payment? And will that coincide with 30 days after now, so that those options are available?
That, that would be the plan. And Jamie, do you want to talk a little bit about token transit?
Sure. So Morgan at SSTAA, we've been discussing token transit, which folks remember prior to the pandemic, that was our digital procurement. It doesn't require any hardware technology. It's really just flash paths, and it is SSTAA dashboard. So one of their most common practices is to offer a 10 punch pass for people so they can wait for their 10 rides ahead of time. And that's what a majority of people are purchasing and using. And then they sort of exceed that 10, those 10 rides. This would allow SSTAA, etc., through their schedulers, to have a dashboard on their computer where they could accept payment over the phone for that kind of pass. And then they keep track as riders use their system of where they are. And then, you know, then the next time they go to override, they can purchase another payment pass. So token transit is a really low-cost option. It doesn't have any infrastructure. It just has a per-transaction fee. So just expands that option.
Thank you, Jamie.
What, what is that fee?
It's, I think, the last time we used it, and so Morgan and I have been going back and forth, token transit has changed since GMT used it. But at that time, it was, I think, 5% per transaction. It was like, it was a pretty fairly low fee because there's no infrastructure that we have to purchase and make.
How do people feel? And I could also say that if we get to a spot where token transit's not going to work out, or if we find that there's other complicating issues, I'll, I'll be happy to pause this and bring it back here.
Just to complete the question, I have no idea how to visualize this. How much does it, it cost to ride to get a ride on this?
$4. Yep.
Whoops, so that's $700. That's a lot of rides.
That's a lot, yeah. Yeah.
So I, I guess I, I would be okay with this with two capitals. One, maybe that the 30-day warranty will not happen until the payment system is in place. And two, that the pass, that you start fresh and just erase the past balances because I'm imagining some of the folks who, that the pass down system, we're not in place to pay.
I agree.
So do you like to, have you, it sounds like it's actually more efficient and better for system?
Right, so. Especially the being able to call when you schedule and be like, hey, you're out of passes. Let's get you, you know, let's get you.
You want to make a motion that includes those two?
Consider that a motion.
Yes.
Thank you. And a second. Any further discussion? That kind of, I, I think it's great. Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Or abstaining? All right. Thank you. Have a conversation. Susan. All right. So the agenda says that we have a break and then executive session.
Yes, and the executive session would start at 10:00. As usual, I forgot to put. Oh, that's, absolutely. And, but we do need to have a, a break. And, and so do we want a 10-minute break, a 15-minute break? Shall we say 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
We'll do 10 minutes. And so we'll get started with an executive session at 9:50. As usual, when I prepared the motions for entering executive session, I forgot to mention to please let us GMT staff in to the executive session. I mean, if you want us to leave, would be happy to do so, but. Oh. And, but, but when we get to that time, we'll just need to make that amendment. So I think that we're at pause. Dan, thank you for joining us, Connor and Alec. And so Alec, I'm not sure how we're going to handle the retreat portion because we're going to have breakouts.
Yeah. I actually, I have to get on another meeting at 10:00 anyways, Clayton, so I.
Okay.
I'll be hop off.
That, that works because I did talk with Tasha yet last week, and she gave me her input. And so when it comes time, I will, I will pretend to be Tasha and provide that perspective from Lemoyle County.
Okay.
And so, and so we're going to be signing off and being done with Zoom.
Good.
And.
Clayton, if I may, just to offer, if you do have any questions for V-Trans as the day goes along, if you want to send an email or even give me a call on my cell, I'll be around all day. Okay?
That sounds great. Hey, do I, could you just shoot me an email with your cell in case I don't have it?
Will do. It's always in my signature, but I'll send it again. Thanks.
Okay. Then I'll just look for your signature block.
Perfect. Thanks, everyone. Enjoy the day. Bye-bye.